Good evening. I would like to call to order the August 1st, 2024 City Council Meeting. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Will the Agenda Coordinator please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Primoroso.
Here.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to our agenda this evening?
No ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're really excited about our presentations this evening. To start it off with our announcements and presentations, we have our annual overview of Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics. So, we're going to ask Gina, who is the Intake and Compliance Manager for Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics, to please come on up to our podium. And maybe she's not here tonight? We are so excited to hear about it. Alright, so we'll have to, we'll see if she shows up. We'll go on. But this is actually, the next item is what we're all really, truly excited about. Tonight, we are honoring our Palm Beach Gardens Police Citizens Mobile Patrol. There have been twenty amazing years of this program, so we're going to have our own Dominic, Chief Dominic Pape, come on up and come to the podium and tell us all about it. Thank you sir.
For the record, Dominic Pape, Police Chief, Palm Beach Gardens PD. With me is Major Robert Wilson. He's the major of, over the community, Citizens Mobile Patrol. As we mark the twentieth anniversary of the Palm Beach Gardens Citizens Mobile Patrol, CMP, it's an opportune moment to reflect on the origins, evolution, and enduring impact of this invaluable community initiative. Conceived by then-Chief of Police Stephen Step, the CMP has grown from a visionary idea into a cornerstone of our city's safety and community engagement efforts. The CMP launched with six dedicated volunteers. Their primary mission was to serve as additional eyes and ears for the community, patrolling gated neighborhoods of the Palm Beach Gardens in observing and reporting any suspicious activities. The program extended its reach beyond gated communities to the entire city, including commercial areas. This expansion was complemented by the introduction of responsibilities such as handicap parking, fire lane parking enforcement. This development alleviated some of the responsibilities on the police force and allowed officers to focus on community policing. Today, the CMP boasts around twenty-five dedicated members who commit to a minimum of one three-hour patrol each week, plus meetings. This cooperation has undeniably contributed to making Palm Beach Gardens a safer place to live and work. The CMP has not only enhanced the safety of our city, but has also fostered a stronger sense of community and cooperation among residents. The spirit of volunteerism and civic duty exemplified by the CMP members is truly commendable and serves as an inspiration to all. And luckily, today, we have four of the original members. Tom Murphy, Patricia Uy, Alan Patty, and this name I may not pronounce
Thank you so much, Chief. So, on behalf of our City Council, first of all, we're going to make all of you guys get up and take a picture with us. That is mandatory. But first of all, we want to ask you for your autograph because you're in our Signature City magazine. So, if anyone hasn't seen this yet, it's published every quarter for our residents. It was a really wonderful two-page spread, all about the CMP. So, thank you guys for everything. So, I hope you can handle all the autographs that are coming your way when you're walking down the mall now. But nonetheless, echo the words that I, that was just, you know, shared with me in the foyer earlier. Our own Clint Shannon, our previous police chief, said that you are a force multiplier for our police team. And I just loved that phrase. Thank you so much for it. I really appreciate it. Because you maximize the ability for our team of police officers to provide the service that our residents need, want, and deserve. So, thank you for everything you do for the last twenty years. On behalf of all of us, we're so thankful. So, could you come take a quick photo, please? And we'll do it in honor of the two folks who are watching from above. Thank you all so much. We do have a few comments from the public this evening. So, what we'll be doing is asking you to come to the podium. You have three minutes to speak. If you could state your name and address when you come up. And again, I apologize ahead of time for any mispronunciations. First, we have Mr. Evan Emerson. After that, we'll have Jay Hodes.
Good evening, everybody. Evan Emerson, 10249 North Military Trail, number 206. I'm up here today in opposition of the PBNAF development of Plant Drive Park. Two months ago, there was a video, or a mention of eight letters of support that were left on all of y'all's desks. And I stated last month that our petition is up to about thirty-five-hundred signatures. There's been six hundred more since the last meeting. So, figured we'd come up here and share some of those names, which are all Palm Beach Gardens residents, to counter the eight letters of support. Starting off, we have Brad Myers, Colleen Mulligan, Ellen Hughes, Greg Lasik, Amanda Swirls, Eileen Gratton, Harold Jared, Allison Jordan, Devon Hall, Julie Clea, Terephira Harry, Azia Dubbs, Johnny Fuentes, Michael Brown, Emily Frankstour, Brandy Bryson, Elise Dinimer, Michael Busetti, Mary Whittletz, Tyler Brewster, Olivia Genseal, Ben Baumeyer, Victoria Stewart, Jack Icardi, Julia Nelson, Stephen Livingston, Armando Camparini, Rachel McAuliffe, Alison O'Call, Francine Gunter, Nelson Valbelos, Kevin Guardian, Peyton Kirk, Danielle Davis, Shawna Carroll, Mike Sebastian, Ethan Champagne, Sarah Glover, Natalie Hill, Nicole Schultz, Olivia Feldman, Matthew Schultz, Jeanette Kaminsky, Tiffany Meek, Jennifer Prince, Carly Lor, Ava Pratt, Riley Adams, Marissa Jones, Rebecca Schwartz, Devon Kreider, Trace Adams, Caroline Skae, Darrell Beard, Brittany Engel, Colton Halford, Jen Akabuchi, Spencer Clark, Kitty Hamilton, Chelsea Hernandez, Reagan Kies, Justin Jims, Justin Roberts, Heta Vaughn, and we have twenty-eight other pages of just Palm Beach Gardens residents who have supported this. Eight letters were shown last time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Jay Hodes, and then William B-O-N-A-D-I-E-S. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Jay Hodes. I live at forty-two sixty-six Honeysuckle Avenue. And I'll continue reading the names. Anthony Daniel Gier Drawn, Alessandra Mardones, Robert McEach, Martha Cole, Courtney Teller, Stephen Shakespeare, Marco Reed, Don McEach, Casey Darling Kniffen, Justin Rothenberg, Vicki Bilberry, LP, Lori Gomez Hall, Finn Casher, Chris Huff, Daniel Teptis, Nentka Dermade McKee, Sarah Casher, Jack Teller, Robert McEach, Nicholas Noserny, Isabella Graver, Carleen James, Kayla Signora, Austin Dezenkan, Lauren Benishi, Sharon Speckman, Amber Privet, Phoebe Hubbard, Jonathan Privet, Brian Cook, Christopher Suarez, Ryan Fedareo, Carl Schaefer, Cade Harrington, Stuart Schaefer, Christina Galliano, Christina Malcolm, Mary O'Dwyer, Lauren Merhead, Becca Hansen, Alejandra Monroe, Sarah Fisher, Barbara Guidian, Laura Hodis, Michael Strivell, Michelle Schwartz, Renee Goodson, Eric Hanson, Sarah Govan, Linda G., Patrick Seewell, Leah Lyons, Sean Saunders, Sally Gates, Mark Calma, Hugh Donovan, Carol Singalono, Erin Sayre, Stacy Tucker, Edward Vorabiev.
Thank you. Next, we have William Bonadie, and then Heather Dykman.
My name is William Bonadie. I live at forty-four oh-one Daffodil Circle South. Been a resident for over forty years. And to continue, the names of the petitioners. Julie Moran, Jude Sardana, Tiffany Lambert, Sue Staley, Monica Ayers, Peyton McGee, Adam Cranmer, Jeff Struble, Rebecca McEach, Alicia Ierson, Stephanie Morse, Basia Harna, Dylan McEach, George Hannan, Samantha McNeil, Blue Glenn, Paul Rodriguez, Joshua Duramus, Max Muggen, Adam Stortz, Reisha Gunshava, Ben Bates, Denver Swinson, Kayden Wolford, Vicki Carmen, Sandra Buchanan, Giovanni Spado, Jameson Mooney, Marty Guzman, William Santoro, Baron Kavek Laura, Harmony Halacey, Ben Rodriguez, Jess Walter, Zachary Pfeiffer, Kimberly Dejarle, John James, Josh James, Erin Muller, Leanne Garner, Daniel Mallo, Mary Sarrow, Heather Dykman Levy, Brian Wood, Manuel Cockdack, Colleen Kirk, Alexandra Sanchez, Michael Litsi, Marsha McEach, Athia Shae, Ashley Gelena, Lawrence Johansson, Robert Venesia, Kendra Mok, Glenda Pelts, Samantha Marx, Stephen Martino, Sarah Browning, Deborah Scott, Alex Calvert, Michael Gaffney, Leslie Kant, Danelson Alvarez, Julia Moran, Jude Sendela, I'm sorry, Sendela, Tiffany Lambert, Sue Staley, I'm sorry, wrong page, Yvette Trailas, Jason Bargone, Marlena Lopez, Sana Ahmed, Joanne Hester, Alex Ortiz, Jennifer Fredericks, Mandy Chan, Robert Fredericks, Klaus Green, Laura Brewer, Anna Ramus, Juliana Martinez, Juana Wisich Mendez, Eric Baker, Hudson McCall, Amanda Lane, Agina Baldwin, Karen Cochran, Mercedes Zapata, Linda Dealbeek, Karen Hughes, David Stennett, Patricia Moore, Joe Bryant, Joseph Howes, Renee Flavio, Kathleen Simpson, Lisa Feiner, and Debbie Baber. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Heather Dykman, and then Fred Markwith.
Good evening. My name is Heather Dykman. I live at three-one-one-one Gardens East Drive, Palm Beach Gardens. Ladies and gentlemen of council, at our last meeting just three weeks ago, due to the Independence Day holiday, our Save the Plant Drive petition was just two people short of three thousand. Change.org petition has gained six-hundred-and-sixty-one signatures in three weeks. To date, that's three-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one people who have signed to save these beloved facilities, underscoring the importance of Plant Drive Park to our residents and our community members, as well as the dissatisfaction with the council's decision to approve a proposal to lease the community's land. This is privatization under the guise of development. The city won't have control over the property, the facility, or its usage upon completion. What reason would a foundation have to listen to residents or neighbors? Our democratic votes on using this space within our city and owned by the city will be gone for at least forty years. Preserving our park isn't just about maintaining green space. It's about honoring our community's rich history and collective values. The park, including its skate park and basketball courts, has been a vital part of our lives for generations. By keeping the park in public hands, we not only respect its historical significance, but also ensure that it remains a vibrant and accessible space for everyone, rather than becoming a semi-private asset. I ask you all to consider reaffirming our community's unwavering commitment to inclusivity and heritage by protecting this treasured park. Thank you.
Next, we have Fred Markwith, and then Angelo Campandonico.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fred Markwith. I live at forty-one oh-six Ilick Circle North in Palm Beach Gardens. Just continuing the names. Mia Burnham, Ashley F., Jordan Potey, Mimi Powell, Stefani Cole, Carmella Davis, Peggy Phelps, John Klepp, Erin Flaherty, Deborah Vaughn, Ashley Banffy, Alice Ortino, Brian Lewis, Thomas Flanagan, Dana Smith, Eric Emerson, Jackson Mallo, Joseph Dimazio, Victoria Broome, Stephanie Ledbetter, Robert Corby, Barbara Patti, Jonathan Amos, Lois Cruz, Anne Marie Zagunino, Mary Fox, Chris Korzinski, Antonio Colco, Michelle Honio, Maureen Smith, Samantha Mione, Britt North, Annalise Mara, Brittany Fitting, Amy DeAngelo, Matthew Reeves, Curry M., Aiden Craig, Paula Swoboda, Corey Williams, Michael Lopez, Erin Nice, Molly Williams, Donalyn Bell, Melissa Berman, Louis Mallo, Margarita Petroff, Anna Stewart, Ryan Kramer, Amanda Bayman, Lisa Jones, Jared Ooster, Lucas Rodriguez, Rob Cook, Dylan Kipper, Delian Hoolen, Peter Marrero, Bonnie Wallach, Bob DeRogge, Caleb Vivins, Marcela DiVono, Michelle Zwart, Lisa Kissner, Molly Cleary, Nathalie Ibarra, F. Ted Brown, Elizabeth Bentley, Christie Specter, Cameron Costello, Brandon Cohen, Juna Cruz, Kowinski Floreville, Mason Stone, Marcela Leary, Lori Hodes, Sean Taker, Steve Diego, Darla Diego, Kathleen Taylor, Cheryl Akner, Dennis Flanagan, Jesslyn Taker, Alicia Christian, Wendy Stottsbury, Paul Hode, Jeannie Rojas, Paul Ritchie, Doty Kent, Anastasia Polinski, Anna Voe, Andrew Chigilio, Hunter Huff, Michael Han. I think this is a shame, folks. I'm sorry that you're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Angelo Camp, I'm going to try to pronounce it, Campandonico. And after that, we have another Campandonico. That would be Alden Campandonico after that.
Thank you, council. It's, my name is Angelino Campandonico. I'm at seven-two-nine Huckleberry Lane in north Palm Beach, Florida, and a proud member of the Palm Beach Gardens Mall Contents. I'll be continuing reading off the list in counter to the eight emails that you all received. Joyce O'Neill, Erica Wallace, Jimmy Willis, Hannah Williamson, Alison McKenzie, Amanda Tice, Jean Mulcahy, Chris Gimmler, Braxton Gray, Jensen Callaway, Evan Tuttle, Jonathan Rosato, Steve Sapienza, Diana Morrow, Nancy Logan, Nick Falzone, Angelina Falzone, Jessica Fanuff, Julian Cole, Crew Parker, Max Mattfin, Dylan Grishhaber, Sophia Rojo, Meredith Kenny, Natalia Castleton, Valerie A. Smith, Autumn Burnett, James Twist, Sania Allen, Donnie Hane, Shamili Scott, Lauren LaRoca, Kyla Ferguson, Sebastian Ortiz, Dylan Haber, Jay Sheptik, Matt Vanderpoel, Clifford Del Santo, Sebastian Robbins, Jenna Bab Santusi, Maureen Malott, Timothy Malott, Travis Tennant, Deanna Jean, Gail Weeks, Mathias Frez, Lisa Galbreth, Ivy Gomez, Clayton Parker, Phyllis McAllister, Jay Gorfito, Haley Big Dick, Madeline Perez, Liv Bernstein, Ela Courts, Bunadon, Brendan Matthew E. Gorfito, Sophia Skezer Bakova, Monica Zaga, Jeremy Forshi, Jase DiTomaso, and Lori Curtis. Thank you.
Thank you. And then now, we have Alden Campandonico, and then Rebecca McEach.
Hi, my name is Alden Campandonico. I live at seven-twenty-nine Huckleberry Lane, north Palm Beach. I used to skate just under two miles every day. Well, not every day. Every time I would go to Plant Drive Park, just to enjoy it. I would like to acknowledge that every time I would take a break and look around, I've never seen anyone not enjoying the park and taking advantage. And I will continue reading the list of names. We have Julie Mooney, Jenna Chividen, Hilda Amos, Alexandra Moss, Dan Wolmer, Adam Spielert, Tara Dale, Alice Nagel, Morgan Rojas, Lauren Pineda, Humelia Arte, Kelsey Gitler, Chris Spellman, Melissa Infant, Brian Wool, Jenny Spellman, Glenn Salz, Courtney Lapirna, Ridd Sayre, Janet Schmidt, Sandra Stone, Kerry Minch, Sean Mullen, John Rojas, Nadine Chealy, Brian Jordan, Jason Mores, Sladka Midmagic, Kayra Yates, Harley Coffey, Linda Monroe, Attilio Okoa, Sasha Wilson, Alexandria George, Erica Colop, Christina Beaver, Brandon Holly, John Murphy, Evan Sordilo, Marilyn Wester, Rodney Dillon, Joel San Miguel, Lindsay Blackwell, Mike Spellman, Edward Fox, Tiffany Swoboda, Mary Champlin, Gary Adams, George John, Greg Bates, Tracy Volstad, Stephanie Sipon, Stacy Rodriguez, Jenny Romero, Joanne Williams, Casey Bach, Kaz Young, Tracy Petch, Janine Mohica, Sykes Shawn, Armento Kelly, and Chris Carroll. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Rebecca McEach. And after that, we have Donald R.I.M.K.U.N.A.S.
Thank you. After June's display and boasting by Mr. Ferris of eight whole letters in support of the ice rink, we wanted to do our own display of how many residents, Palm Beach Gardens residents, are actually opposed to it. So, here we go. Valentin Zumo, Patty Callahan, Michael Martino, Mark Lefko, Nikki Dion, Tracy Halford, Kelly Ring, Kristen Rice, Clinton Halford, Ruth Proctor, Erica Stone, Caleb Hedrick, Cooper Carroll, Madison Reed, Neil Duke, Dylan Thomason, Carter Tran, Zach Bryant, Kelly Ahern, Melissa Rothmull, Alison Marx, Samantha Zavato, Jane Lil, Evan Emerson, Stephen Devine, Christina Goldman, Jake Samso, Carolina Blue Barefoot, Andrea Carrera, Alan Engelmann, Alyssa Ross, Matthew Wolfe, Jeff Adele, Brandon Hume, Alyssa Klein, Chloe Melnick, Cam King, Angel Aguilar, Jeffrey Hume, Rebecca Cartwright, Jake Reed, London Van Dusen, Kayden Sharma, R. Moham, Cassandra Hun, Austin Gilchrist, Lea Deveste, Derek Coleman Turn, Stephanie Vienz, Jenny Groover, Susan Knight, Aubrey Ray, Natalie Garner, Cassidy McGee, Brianna Fober, Corey Sparks, Benjamin Seymour, Randall Sparks, Woodrow Carrara, Sarah Bartels, Shayna Richard, Claudette Cyril, Emerson Eisenhauer, Carol Collins, Veronica McGuire, Ian Eisenhauer, Emily Eisenhauer, Scythe Shepherd, Christian Collins, James Abbott, Michaela Hernandez, Margarita Truitt, Melanie Garcia, my son Dylan McEach. Melanie Garcia, my son Dylan McKeech, Robert Kissner, Mark Diamne, Ernst Jean Baptiste, Connie Cochran, Marley Hopper, Lorraine Murray, Brianna Clary, Jay Hodes, Alex Hicks, Pamela Dimick, Nancy Stephon, Alexander Charles, Maribel Chavez, Reverend Carol Politik, Teresa Anzalone, Linda Pulvermacher, Thomas Lutier, Danielle Groberic, Ari Aguilar.
Thank you. Next, we have Dylan McKeech. And then, I'm sorry. It was Donald Rimkunis. Sorry. And then Dylan McKeech.
Hi, Donald Rimkunis. Live at 4121 Ilex Circle North, Palm Beach Gardens. I'm here to read a few more names and let you know how many people are against this project. Peter Sandez, Anzilia Lopez, Donna Kislin, Judy Reed, Yolanda Marquez, Michelle Wood, Robert Supinger, Ryan Supinger, Lord Salvador, Maria Gilberta Murphy, Gladys Lopez, Jeffrey Goodnick, Klaus Kuchin, Britani Ghuri, Kyle Thomas, Barbara Kislin, Isabella La Ford, Christian Masson, Eric Halit, Lucy Wilson, Tim Wilson, Joanne Hester, Christopher Mazza, Kathleen McAnus, Elizabeth McAnus, Michael McAnus, Kimberly Handmaker, Benjamin Handmaker, Justin Higgins, Sarah Dill, Noah Farrell, Alice Higgins, Ruth Kramer, Eric Earhart, Porte Beileford, Jennifer Frankel, Catherine Sorerno, Alice Reno, Marlee Hedenberger, Sarah Marwa, Brenna Vetta, Nar Killen, Rebecca Pratt, Simone Realtan, Michael Burke, Peter Burke, Peter Baker, Christopher Young, Adriana Zarate, Heather Distefano, Ashley Heford, Joseph Randazzo, Hunter Hudson, Anne Noble, J.T. Noble, Simon Goper, Hannah Welton, Kim Howard Workman, Diana Hicks, Matt Cito, Enrico Golaz, Jacob Miller, Travis Haber, Jennifer, excuse me, Daniel Jamkyle, Steve Skolinski, Carol Jen, Carl Proctor, Gianna Martino, Brian Zandala, Eric Allman, Reinhard Knigman, Tony Di Nofo, Melissa Goldstein, Hunter Ramsdale, Janelle Goldstein, Christopher Sanchez, Tai Hung, Luigi Vacaro, Rosie Quintalan, Stephen Hablinsky.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Dylan McKeech and then Nancy Rimkunis.
My name is Dylan McKeech. I live at 4599 Holly Drive. I'm a personal user of the skate park and I'll continue reading the names. Daniel Champagne, Paul Caruso, Olivia Lay, Jessica Quiggle, Megan Morehouse, Kyle Walker, Sherri Jones, Ryan Dyer, Pamela Leary, Brandon Loaro, Catherine Gregory, Bradley Walker, Mia Cora, Merrick Ryan, David Baber, Lindsey Grace, Smith Sanon, A.J. Lasek, Richard Vingress, Karen Abis, Peter Fastuka, Bill Kostelnik, Jessica Erling, Christian Fleming, Adrian Balbuena, Sloan Hoffler, Austin Finney, Cynthia Lopez, Kevin Loeb, Meredith Bartels, Brian Nash, Erica Perez, Eric Brown, Andy Garcia, Shannon Walker, Patricia Smith, Brandon McCaffrey, Katie Ull, Kimberly Stevens, Ben Rubens, Sherri Jensen, Michael Foster, Fred Markwith, Helen Schmidt, Ian Eisenhower, Joanne Bates, Patricia Taylor, Stephon Flasher, Carla Ankers, George Sterlossi, Stefan Bellic, Julian Vukasich, John Paul Rivera, Cynthia Rogers, Gerard Urves, Karen Gilbert, Andrea Day, Robert Lemp, Travis Schmider, Kelly Finson, Josh Tracy, Ryan Souls, Ryan Wolf, Katie Perez, Lisa Fenton, Torre Turnier, Shelby Turnier, Randy Roman, Trish Hayden, Cheryl Ryan, Ali Murphy, Par Lomis, Edward Stone, David Stone, Althea Shea, Chuck Miles, Rebecca Jerson, Tamara Wheat. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy Rimkunis.
Hi, my name is Nancy Rimkunis. I live at 4121 Ilex Circle North, Palm Beach Gardens. I first found out, I did not find out anything about the park until someone contacted me. The signs were great, but those who don't know what QR, I'm illiterate in computer, did not understand that if they went to that site that they could vote. We had no idea we could vote until someone queued us in. Ricardo Edwards, Hope Tucker, E.J. Donahue, Oscar Lars, Nancy Rimkunis, Dar Costa, Alexa Doloski, Jordan Johnson, Rose Husanda, Hung Nelson, Kathy Sorkin, Jordan Cox, Renee Burghel, Jeffrey Brett Brown, Anna Donuts, Crystal Funes, Catherine Maroon, Michelle Luke, Kalen Pinaggio, Sarah Blidenstein, Deborah Dominguez, Nora Lambert, Christine Hattrall, Matt Butler, Sadak Ahmed, Victoria Dodson, Oliver Vosquoz, Cindy Saban, Chris Jones, Louise Manny, Lois Modalsky, Kathy Stepanek, Linda Allman, Waleska Sanchez, Isis Williams, Jessica Goodrich, Angela Obracha, George Shepard, David Shepard, Terri Serclair, Elise, Elise Shore, Anissa Bacon, David McCall, Michelle Perez, Lydia Melville, Nancy Morelli, Kyle DeAndrea, Gabriel Seris, Denise Sassen, Shane Hartwell, Alec, a bad beat. Jessica K., Bruce Mikloski, Bry, Bry Marion, Scott Ernigton, Alexander Rysa, Cali Fago, Dan, Diane Hook, Colin Navin, Adele McDouglass, Margaret Loomis, Paige Dugan, Zachary Salvadoritz, Judy Kenny, Julian Ocampo, Greg Kenny, Molly Browning, Carlisle Reedon Banner, De, and Niall Cardenas.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. So those are all of the comment cards. We don't have any comment cards for anything on the agenda. So we'll move along to our city manager report. Ron, do you have a report this evening?
I do have a few items to bring your attention. First, I'd like to call Captain Alex Lamb from our Fire Rescue Department here to give you an update on a program we brought to you a couple of months ago.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, Alex Lamb. I'm an EMS captain here with Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back. I'm very excited to be here.
We're excited to hear about this. Thank you.
So back in April, I came to give you guys a presentation on our newly-formed Whole Blood Program that Fire Rescue is doing. And I'm excited to come back and share some of the successes that we've had with the program since its April 8 launch date. As you may remember, Whole Blood is a vital intervention for multi-system trauma patients and certain medical patients. These patients truly are the sickest of the sick and every minute counts. Whole Blood serves as a life-saving bridge therapy that can buy a seriously ill or injured patient the crucial minutes that they need while being transported to a trauma center or the emergency department for definitive care. As with any emergency, the sooner a life-saving therapy is initiated, the better the patient's outcome hopefully will be. Since April 8 of this year, we've administered seven units of Whole Blood. To be completely transparent, this is actually more administrations than we thought we would do in the first three months of our new program. There's a couple of reasons for that. When we first thought about developing our Whole Blood program, we went back and did a retrospective study the year before using the current criteria that other agencies are using for administering Whole Blood. And we came up with about 12 or 14 patients that would have benefited from the Whole Blood. As we got further along in the program when we started to develop our protocols, we worked very closely with our medical directors who enabled us to open up our inclusion criteria for the patients who qualified for Whole Blood. This is kind of neat because it allowed us to bring more patients into the program and therefore save more lives. The other byproduct of that is not only have we administered it more, but that has translated to us wasting less. As we know, Whole Blood is a precious commodity and we want to make sure that we're being good stewards of it and using it wisely. So here's how it breaks down. Since April 8 of this year, we've administered seven units of blood. Three of the five, sorry, three of the seven patients, five of them have been trauma patients and two of them have been medical patients. In five of these patients, Whole Blood truly did make a difference. Of the seven patients, like I said, five were traumatic injuries. Unfortunately, two of those trauma patients had injuries that were so severe they were incompatible with life and ended up passing away at the trauma center. I'd like to give you an example of one of those calls where Whole Blood made a difference. It's kind of neat from our perspective because we haven't heard of a situation like this before. On July 12 of this year, Rescue 61, Lada 61, and EMS 61 were called to a local surgery center for a cardiac arrest patient. Upon their arrival, they had found a 60-year-old male who had just made it through surgery and was now in recovery after having abdominal surgery. The crews got there and found a very sick patient. According to the recovery room nurse, the patient had come out of surgery. He had a couple of drains implanted in his stomach and the nurse was concerned that the drains were filling up faster than they should. So for about 30 minutes, she continued to empty these drains and kept watching the patient's vital signs decline with each minute. Finally, the patient became unresponsive. She thought he'd gone into cardiac arrest and she called 911. When our unit showed up there, they found the patient very sick. Like I said, cold, climatic, diaphoretic, low blood pressure, high heart rate. The crews immediately got the report from the nurse, determined that the patient had some kind of internal bleeding and set up to administer the Whole Blood. During this time, the surgeon who had been in the operating room with another patient had come into PACU, was pretty amazed and pleased to see that we were setting up to administer Whole Blood and decided to open up the patient right there in the recovery room and begin to stop the internal bleeding. I'm happy to say that although the patient was critical when we arrived, thanks to the work of the Fire Rescue team, the administration of Whole Blood and the interventions of the surgeon, we were able to transport the patient to the hospital with a stable blood pressure and heart rate. From a personal point of view, I've got to say I've been in the Fire Rescue industry for about 30 years. I've been privileged to serve here for about 26 and a half of those years. And by far, this is one of the most exciting prehospital interventions that I've seen come to our field. So it's kind of neat and I'm very proud to be a part of that. As I close, I would just like to point out that although I'm up here representing the Fire Department, none of this would have been possible without the support of your leadership, city leadership, and the help and support of multiple departments within the city. These departments provide us the help and support that we need to provide excellent care to our residents and visitors. I would also like to thank Ball and Niles Charitable Foundation. As you may remember, we decided to put this program into service mid-budget year and they were generous enough to provide us the money for not only the equipment, but our first-year operating costs. And of course, I'd like to thank the men and the women of the Fire Department who always rise to the occasion and complete the mission no matter how difficult it may be. Can I answer any questions for anybody? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Charlotte Przynski, our Leisure Services Administrator, talk to you about some special awards.
Good evening, Council. I am Charlotte Przynski, Leisure Services Administrator. Our department is very active in the Florida Recreation and Park Association. And each year, our association that represents parks and recreation professionals across the state gather in August. And during that time, there is an award ceremony. And I am very honored to stand in front of you tonight to tell you that we will be the recipients of three different awards at this year's conference at the end of August. So the first one is the Innovative Programming Award for our Splash into Storytime. Just to give you a little explanation, the Innovative Programming Award recognizes the importance of creative, trend-setting ideas as the cornerstone of expanding community participation in leisure programs. That's the criteria or the goal that you have to meet to apply for this award. Splash into Storytime, as you know, is concentrated on our families with children under age five and it includes a water safety story. But what makes this program very unique is it's also delivered in American Sign Language. It's an inclusive program that reaches across all barriers to teach our children about water safety. The next award is going to be Agency Excellence for Economic Impact and Development. The Agency Excellence Award recognizes and honors the state's most outstanding community park, recreation, and leisure service agencies for excellence in parks and recreation. Our award submission was based on our Community Impact Report. And in that report, details can be found on such programs can be found on such programs as On Autism, where we partner with the L's Foundation, and allow our community members to shop at the Green Market for handmade items that showcase the talents of individuals with autism, and that continues to fund their program as they sell those items. Also, in that report, you'll see our annual preview to Artigra that is normally held at the tennis center just before the large Artigra event, and this focus is for local and state artists to showcase their artwork and sell their artwork and just be preamble to what's coming to the larger event. The third award, which is probably one of the most significant, is Excellence in Sport Tourism for the mid- and large market. This award is normally given to counties because of what they do county-wide. The Florida Sports Foundation, in partnership with FRPA, presents this annual award, and it is designed to recognize departments' contribution to sport tourism in their community. To be considered for this award, you have to be nominated by your local sports commission, and the Palm Beach County Sports Commission is an amazing partner of ours and helps us generate sports tourism, not only for our community, but for all of North County. This award, though, I do want to say, recognizes the outstanding efforts that the city team puts forth in presenting and building outstanding sports facilities that cultivate sports on a local, national, and international stage right here in our community. This award, along with all of the ones that mentioned tonight, is a testament to the foundation of teamwork and support from all the departments and staff. Although I may be standing in front of you tonight to tell you about these awards, the spotlight truly goes to the city and all of the staff. To my fellow department heads and the many departments that we coordinate with, it's actually congratulations for everyone across the city. So, thank you.
Is that better? Giles is from Engineering Department. He's going to bring you up to date on a project that we took on earlier this summer and promised you it'd be done in a short period of time, and I'm going to let him show you.
Hi. Good evening, council. I'm Giles Rhodes, Operations Director in the Engineering Department. Tonight, I'm going to give you a positive update on the status of the Fairchild Gardens Avenue and Fairchild Avenue Roundabout that was recently installed. May 2nd, 2024 City Council Meeting, Todd Engel, the city engineer, provided a proposal to the council to fast-track the construction of a roundabout at this intersection. Todd requested to do a full roadway closure during the summertime to expedite the construction timeline and help by reducing the cost of the construction at the roundabout. Added advantage of this work during the summer was we could take advantage of the summertime school break, as well as complete the work before the seasonal influx of travelers from the north. Additionally, we could keep pedestrians, commuters out of an active construction site, so another added advantage. June 17th was decided as the construction date. That gave us a few weeks to square away and fine-tune the schedule with the roadway contractor, as well as notify some surrounding properties, such as Palm Beach Gardens Post Office to the northeast, the Legacy Plaza Shops to the west, and the Legacy Plaza Condominiums to the southwest. On the 17th, we were ready. We did a full roadway closure of that intersection, and then on... There we go. June 24th, the roundabout was completed. We reopened the roadway, and it looks, we think it looks outstanding. The roundabout is in use now. The roadway travels well. There's a little bit of fine-tuning, some landscaping that we'll complete on the northeast, but the project did complete within the time schedule and within budget.
I'd just like to say that they've done an excellent job, and some government agencies takes five years to get a plan off the table, so I just want to-
Five? I think you mean more. You're being nice.
Thank you. I'm not accused of that very often. But our engineering department is totally amazing. Construction, our construction development is truly amazing, and I just wanted to give engineering an opportunity to be recognized for the great work that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Giles. And that completes my report.
All right. Usually, I don't say anything after that, but I just have to say, stories like we just heard, from Whole Blood, to all the awards that our amazing recreation staff has won and deserves, and the awards are for inclusive programming as well, which I don't see any, well, speaking on behalf of our council, I don't think any of us really see that anywhere else. Please feel free to chime in. And then finishing up with a roadway project that was done within the budget, faster, really, by a few days than you said it would be done, is extraordinary, and we continue to lead mobility, which is huge. So this is the kind of stuff that, you know, we don't hear about in the paper or on the news, but this is what makes our city so wonderful to live in. You don't know you're on this beautiful roundabout. You don't even feel it, because you guys make it seamless. The programming is so easy to access. So I just had to, you know, fangirl on all of this. So thank you all so much. Anybody else have anything? No? All right. Okay. Moving along to our consent agenda. Is anyone pulling anything from consent? Oh, I forgot. My mistake. Thank you. I can read Ron's mind. We do have the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics. Thank you. We apologize for any confusion on the time.
You know, I apologize for my tardiness. I had it on my calendar for 7 o'clock, and so I was sitting in my office working.
Well, you got a little extra work done. Come on. Thank you for coming up.
Good evening, and thank you for having me today. My name is Gina Lebec, and I am the Intake and Compliance Manager for the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics, and I'm here to talk today about our crucial role in fostering and enhancing public trust in government. The Commission on Ethics was established in 2010, following a 2009 presentation for grand jury recommendation for ethics reform in Palm Beach County, and I've had the privilege of being part of this office since inception, witnessing its growth and impact over the years. Our main responsibility is to ensure oversight, transparency, and accountability for over 12,000 elected officials, public employees, and advisory board members in the county. We also have limited jurisdiction over vendors, lobbyists, and their principals and employers. Our commission operates independently from any county or municipal government influence, and it consists of five volunteer members of the community selected by independent groups, ensuring impartial and fair oversight. The county government and the 39 municipalities in Palm Beach County must adhere to ethics ordinances that we enforce. The Code of Ethics provides a framework to ensure public officials and employees act with integrity, independence, and impartiality. It prohibits using public office for personal gain, emphasizing public trust and accountability. Education and prevention are cornerstones of our ethics program. We focus on continuous training, offer advisory opinions, and strive to foster a culture and ethics within our government agencies. Our programs are designed to enhance public trust in government operations, demonstrating our commitment to ethical governance. Our staff offers training sessions and provides advisory opinions, having issued nearly 540 to date. This proactive approach aims to prevent ethical lapses and ensure ethical conduct within our community. While we can enforce penalties such as letters of reprimand and fines up to $500 per violation, our primary focus is to, is on education to prevent violations before they occur. We ensure transparency by making all of our advisory opinions, all of our gift forms, voting conflict forms, and complaints available on our website. In conclusion, I'd like to thank you for all your dedicated work. As you continue your responsibilities, remember to ask first and act later. And that ends my presentation. If you need any further information, please contact us. We're always available to provide an opinion or any information that we can.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we'll go to our consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from consent this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Excellent. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move right along to our public hearings. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance 7, 2024, first reading for city-initiated zoning designation for 1156 Richard Road. Ordinance 9, 2024, first reading, city-initiated zoning designations for Western Northlake Boulevard. Resolution 46, 2024, Panther National signage. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council also, excuse me, is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testified tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, or other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a comment card and give it to our agenda coordinator. The agenda coordinator will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. So let's move on to Ordinance 6. We are actually going to have Ordinance 6 and Ordinance 7. They're a combined presentation with separate votes that will be taken on each item. But since Ordinance 7 is quasi-judicial, ex parte communication is going to need to be declared. So Marcy, do you have any ex parte?
I do not.
All right. Dana?
No.
All right, Carl? All right, myself, I have none, so no council has any ex parte. Let's move along to Ordinance 6, 2024. If our agenda coordinator could please read the title.
Ordinance 6, 2024. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a small-scale amendment to the comprehensive plan Future Land Use Map in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPSS-24-06-0002, in order to assign the land use designation of Palm Beach Gardens Public, P, to approximately 14.15 acres of recently annexed property. Currently designated Palm Beach County Transportation and Utilities Facilities, UT, generally located on the west side of Park Lane, approximately 0.2 miles west of the intersection of alternate A1A and Richard Road, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing that the future land use map shall be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing, and today we have Annie Besslin at the podium.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Reed and members of the council. I do have a brief presentation combined for Ordinance 6 and Ordinance 7, 2024. These ordinances are primarily an administrative function post-annexation into the city to assign a city land, future land use, and zoning designation. This parcel is approximately 14.15 acres and was annexed into the city on June 7th, 2018. This site is located about .2 miles west of the intersection of alternate A1A and Richard Road. The site is home to a Seacoast Utility Authority water pumping and storage facility, as well as the City of Palm Beach Gardens Police and Fire Department Training Facility. So the city is proposing comparable land use to what the county had. So the current county land use is transportation utilities facilities, and the city is proposing public. The current county zoning is public ownership district, and the city is proposing public institutional district. The site was appropriately publicly noticed per city code, and staff had provided the I-Park notice on June 12th and have received no comments to date. The petitions were also presented to the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board at their July 9th meeting and recommended approval, and staff recommends approval of both ordinances and is available if you have any questions.
Goodness. Thank you. We don't seem to have any questions. We don't have any comment cards this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 6?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 6, 2024.
Beautiful. Any discussion from council? None? All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll second it in a-
Sorry. My bad.
I'll second it. Sorry.
My mistake.
I'll second it on first reading, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move along to Ordinance 7. We've had our presentation, but we still need to read the title, so I'm going to ask our agenda coordinator to read the title, please.
Ordinance 7, 2024. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, assigning the zoning designation of Palm Beach Gardens Public Institutional, PI District to approximately 14.15 acres of recently annexed property, currently zoned Palm Beach County Public Ownership, PO District, generally located on the west side of Park Lane, approximately 0.2 miles west of the intersection of alternate A1A and Richard Road, providing that the zoning map shall be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. We've already done ex parte. We had our presentation with Ordinance 6 for 2024. We do not have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. And if I could get a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 7, 2024.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Mayor, to approve Ordinance 7, 2024.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll second.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's go ahead and bring it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Let's move along to Ordinance 8. Ordinance 8 and Ordinance 9 are combined presentation with separate votes that'll be on each item. Since Ordinance 9 is quasi-judicial, we will do ex parte again. So let's go the other side. Carl, do you have any ex parte?
No, ma'am.
None.
No.
All right. Neither do I. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and have our agenda coordinator read the title, please.
Ordinance 8, 2024. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a small-scale amendment to the comprehensive plan Future Land Use Map in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPSS-24-06-0003, in order to assign the land use designation of Palm Beach Gardens Public, P, to approximately 14.92 acres of recently annexed property, and Palm Beach Gardens Rural Residential, RR, to approximately 33.47 acres of recently annexed property, the subject site consisting of four parcels totaling approximately 48.39 acres currently designated Palm Beach County Rural Residential, RR, generally located on the south side of Northlake Boulevard between Greatview Boulevard and 130th Avenue North, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing that the future land use map shall be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Once again, we have Annie Besslin, our planner, at the podium.
Yes. Thank you. For the record, my name is Anne Besslin. I'm a planner here at the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and I have been sworn in. I do have another presentation combined for Ordinance 8 and 9, 2024. This is, again, that administrative function to assign a city land use and zoning designation post-annexation. For this petition, it's four parcels that total approximately 48.39 acres that were annexed into the city on May 4th, 2023, as a part of a larger annexation with 301.64 acres. These parcels are shown on the map before you, and it's on the western side of Northlake Boulevard on the south, between Greatview Boulevard and 130th Avenue. The farthest west parcel is Pierce Hammock Elementary School, and the other three are vacant. We are, again, assigning a comparable land use and zoning to the counties. So the county currently has a land use of rural residential, one dwelling unit per 10 acres for all four parcels, and the city is proposing public land use for the elementary school site and rural residential for the other three. The current county zoning is agricultural residential district, and the city is proposing- and the city is proposing public institutional for the school site and agricultural residential district for the other three. The site was appropriately publicly noticed per city code. The I park notice was given on June twelfth, and no objections have been received to date. The petitions were shown to the Planning, Zoning and Appeals Board at their July ninth meeting, and they recommended approval for both. And staff recommends approval for both and is available if you have any questions.
Excellent, thank you so much. So we don't have anyone wishing to speak. I don't have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve ordinance eight, 2024, please?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance eight, 2024. I'll second.
Thank you both so much. Any discussion, questions, or otherwise? All right, we're just going along with Florida statutes and looks great. Let's go ahead and bring it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We still need to vote on ordinance nine, so if the agenda coordinator could please read the title.
Ordinance nine, 2024. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, assigning the zoning designation of Palm Beach Gardens Public Institutional PI District to approximately fourteen point nine two acres of recently annexed property and Palm Beach Gardens Agricultural Residential AR District to approximately thirty-three point four seven acres of recently annexed property. The subject site consisting of four parcels totaling approximately forty-eight point three nine acres currently zoned Palm Beach County Agricultural Residential AR District, generally located on the south side of Northlake Boulevard between Greatview Boulevard and one hundred and thirtieth Avenue North, providing that the zoning map shall be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Excellent, thank you so much. With that, we have already declared our ex parte, and in our presentation with done with ordinance eight, we do not have any comment cards, so I'm going to close the hearing. May I please get a motion and a second to approve ordinance nine, 2024 from the council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance nine, 2024. I'll second.
Lovely, all right. Do we have any discussion, questions, or otherwise?
Ma'am.
Well done. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you so much. Moving right along to resolution forty-two, 2024, which is our... Agenda coordinator, once again, will be reading a beautiful title for us. Go for it.
Resolution forty-two, 2024. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the adoption of the city's program year 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan Application for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, USHUD, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Funding, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you so much. We do have Olivia here at the podium. Hello, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Great, thank you. Resolution forty-two.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. My name is Olivia Ellison, Principal Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department, and I am happy to present resolution forty-two, 2024, to you, which is the proposed Community Development Block Grant 2024 Annual Action Plan. Just a little bit of CDBG background. It was established by Congress in nineteen seventy-four to provide direct federal aid to primarily benefit low to moderate income households and neighborhoods. And since 2015, the city has been a direct grantee of these funds. With being a direct grantee, we are required to adopt two type of plans. We have the five-year consolidated plan that outlines priorities for the CDBG funds, and then we have our annual action plans that identify specific activities to complete those priorities. We are in our second consolidated plan, five-year term, and our five-year plan was adopted on November fifth, 2020 with resolution sixty-three, 2020. And within those plans, we had priority goals identified, which included the Mary Circle and Dana Drive Waterline Project. With the proposed 2024 Annual Action Plan, which is our fifth and last annual action plan of our second consolidated plan, we plan on continuing the implementation of the Mary Circle and Dana Drive Waterline Project with this year's allocation of funds. Mary Circle and Dana Drive were annexed in the city in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and two, and they currently use well water. And with this needed improvement, we are helping residents meet Florida Health Department standards. So, major project milestones. All of these milestones have been met, and we are in our final stages of construction. I am very happy to report to you guys that the water line has been installed on Mary Circle and also Dana Drive. We are in the final testing and flushing stages, and those results will be submitted to the Health Department for approval. And of course, we did have to dig up the road to install that water line, and the road paving, starting with Mary Circle first, did start this week, actually. So we are anticipating for the completion of this project to be next month. So with that being said, the funds that we are applying for with this annual action plan would just be getting our money back, reimbursed, reimbursement. Okay, public participation. The 2024 Annual Action Plan was advertised for public comment as required per our citizen participation plan, and staff recommends approval of resolution forty-two, 2024. Thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you so much. So we don't have anyone wishing to speak on this item or any comment cards, so let's close the hearing. May I please have a motion and a second to approve resolution forty-two?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution forty-two, 2024. I'll second.
Thank you both so much. Any conversation or discussion?
I just want to commend all of you for putting this together, obtaining this and doing this, because there are a lot of communities out there that would love to see this happen in their neighborhood. And these folks are super lucky and I'm sure thankful of everything that you've done to make this happen. And I truly appreciate it. I know the council probably agrees with me as well, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Fantastic work. I mean, grant money, bettering the neighborhoods in our community, and someone that were annexed in later in life that came in, they should be held to the standard of the city. So for what we're doing, fantastic. I just have one question, because I'm not a planner or designer or whatever. The water line, does that go down the middle of the street and then connectivity into the homes? Is that how it's set up?
So, I am going to ask Giles Rhodes, who has...
Come on back up.
He has been helping me with... He's basically taken over this project and handling the technical aspect of things, and he will be able to answer that for you.
That's okay, you do the money. We'll let him do the technical stuff, we're good with that. Giles, you weren't done, buddy, come on.
Yeah, I'm back. So, it's a bit varied. On Mary Circle, the water main is in the roadway. It basically runs in one of the travel lanes, and then the water surfaces branch out. And we share the water surfaces for a lot of the properties. There'll be one service line, and it'll branch apart and make multiple meters, so... Little less destructive to the roadway, but the whole roadway is being restored. Dana Drive, the water main is kind of running a little further off the edge of the roadway.
A trickier there, yeah.
Dana Drive and Mary Circle, a lot of the properties are on septic drainfields. So we had to comply with some offsets to make sure the water main was far enough away from that drainfield. So it's a little more off to the center of the roadway, and that is... That one branches out the same way. We tried to share the services and...
Multiple meters?
Yep.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you, I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Oops, my pleasure, this is great. Anyone else? All right, big deal, septic to sue. I mean, it's just massive. And I know that's like I was on the zoning board, I think, when I first heard about this. So it's taken a little while, but it had to. And to utilize grants is extraordinary. So I think, once again, the city is setting a beautiful precedent. With that, let's take it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all so much for all of your hard work on this project. Moving along to resolution forty-six. If our agenda coordinator could please read the title.
Resolution forty-six, 2024. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a miscellaneous petition to allow a ground sign associated with the Panther National Temporary Golf Facilities within Golf Course Track One of the Panther National Master Plan within the Avenir Planned Community Development, PCD, Panther National being located on the west side of Coconut Boulevard approximately one point five miles north of Northlake Boulevard, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing a waiver, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Excellent, thanks so much. Let's open the hearing. We're going to go ahead and do ex parte again. Do you have any, ma'am?
None.
Moving right along.
None.
No.
All right, thank you so much. With that, we have a petitioner brought presentation. We have George here from Cutler in Hearing. Good evening.
Good evening, again for the record. My name is George Missimer with Cutler in Hearing, and I have been sworn in. We've got a really easy one for you tonight. This is a miscellaneous petition brought forward specifically for a signage waiver at our temporary golf facility out at Panther National. There is an existing screen wall that was constructed along with our temporary golf facility, which supports the golf course, which is operational, and we are requesting to put our Panther National logo on that screen wall. Now, because the wall is taller than the maximum permitted size for ground signs, which is ten feet, one side is about eleven and a half, the other is about thirteen and a half, we are requesting a waiver for the height to the ground sign. I think we're all familiar with the location of the development, Panther National, and here's a detail of what that screen wall looks like with the logo attached. We do meet all the other requirements for ground signs, but the maximum height permitted, again, which is ten feet. So we are requesting a waiver for the height of the ground sign to exceed that maximum height by one and a half feet on one side and three and a half feet on the other side. We are proposing additional landscaping around that sign. And that wall was constructed to screen the temporary facility AC units, which were attached to the sides of the building there, as you can see in the picture. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but that's all we've got for you.
Thank you so much. Do we have a staff presentation?
No additional staff presentation, Madam Mayor. Staff does support the petition along with the waivers.
Excellent, and thank you all for your patience this evening. So we don't have any comment cards, or I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I please have a motion and a second to approve resolution forty-six, 2024?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution forty-six, 2024. I'll second.
Okay, lovely, so much. Any discussion, questions, or otherwise from council?
No, except that I absolutely love the logo. So on this wall and the contrast, it looks superb.
Really cool.
Things are really moving over there, too, as well. We've gotten to drive out there and take a look at some of the development going on. It's extraordinary, it's very beautiful.
Absolutely.
All right, so let's move along. Let's bring it to motion and second. You gave that, let's go ahead and go to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. You have a new sign.
Thank you very much.
Our pleasure, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move on to our last one of the evening. If the agenda coordinator could please read the title for resolution forty-seven, 2024.
Resolution forty-seven, 2024. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a request from Avenir Development LLC for Art in Public Places, AIPP, for the Avenir Town Center within the Avenir Planned Community Development, PCD, to be placed within Phase One of the Avenir Town Center, generally located northeast of the intersection of Northlake Boulevard and Coconut Boulevard, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Great job, thank you so much. We have Ken Tuma here this evening, hello, sir.
Hello. Good evening, Ken Tuma with Urban Design here on behalf of Landstar, who is a developer of the town center at Avenir. And we're really... I have a great opportunity to meet a nice new artist into the city. His name is Ben Leoni, sitting here on my left. He is doing the artwork in the Avenir Town Center for the first phase. I'm going to walk you through a short PowerPoint presentation. But the artwork that you're going to see tonight is something called a silhouette, and Mr. Leoni will go through all the details of it. But this is for the first phase of Avenir, and if you haven't had the opportunity to travel out to Avenir lately, you may want to go look at the town center, because the amount of construction that is occurring in about a four acre site is amazing, and hopefully will be open in September. And as part of that, we need to work our way through the Art in Public Places process. I know you're familiar, but for the folks in the audience, the Avenir Town Center is located here in the southeast corner, adjacent to Coconut Boulevard and Northlake. This is the actual site plan that you approved, I believe, two years ago, approximately the same timeline, which is under construction, is Phase One, Phase One identified on the screen. The first three buildings are actually under construction and very near completion in construction. As part of that approval, a very important part of that approval was this area called the Passos there in the middle of the subject site. We're identifying that as a location for the first piece of art in Avenir. We believe, well, we don't believe, we know there will be multiple pieces of art in Avenir. So identified on the screen, buildings one, two, and three, or excuse me, location for artworks for the first three buildings will be right here. This is the Passos, which is intended to be the north-south connector in a very beautiful area to allow walking and connection between the townhomes and the town center itself, and also to create a nice breakup for the large parking area that's required as part of a shopping center. So that is where we're proposing to put the first piece of art. In the future, you'll see other art pieces as other buildings come online, being identified here in front of building eight and building nine, and potentially even more art as we move through the process, because as you know, your code requires one percent of the vertical construction cost to be placed in artwork. This is a view of that Passos from what we presented to you back two years ago. On the left-hand side, on the central theme down here, this is building... This is building three, which is constructed, and it's a restaurant. On the other side, we'll be building sixteen, which is not part of the immediate phase, but will be coming shortly in the future. And this is the Passos area. You'll note in the forefront, in the foreground, is the plinth that's going to be an area for outdoor music or a place for a Christmas tree. And then immediately behind it, hard to see here, you'll notice that this little silhouette starts coming up. And with that, I'm going to start turning over to someone who knows what they're talking about when it comes to silhouettes. This is just a blow up of that area, and you can start seeing the blue silhouette. Mr. Leoni has... Mr. Leoni, which... Ben Leoni, I may have said Brett. Ben Leoni has a really great vision for this, and I think when you understand where he's coming from, it's a really cool piece of art that will fit in very nicely within the city. Ben?
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to meet you all, Ben Leoni. To begin, I'd like to offer some background on myself and then also some insight into my creative process. Let's see here, I'm going to go to the next page. My name is Ben Leoni. I'm an artist, born and raised in the area, and my studio is currently based in West Palm Beach, Florida. My early career was rooted in construction and architecture, and that's a passion that has informed my artistic journey. While I now identify as an artist, my formative years were spent on construction sites, and that was something that I considered my vocation at that time. I pursued my education at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and subsequently relocated to Brooklyn, where I worked seven years with a world renowned sculptor. My artistic vision is influenced by my love for construction and passion for surfing, both of which have deepened my appreciation for the environment. My practice has been an ongoing conversation about our need to develop while also recognizing the importance of preserving the environment. I try to make the argument that while development can be intrusive at times, it can exist in ways that highlights honors and also works in conjunction with the surrounding environment to promote a healthier climate. So, I'd like to just get into the project itself. I'll start with explaining a bit of the artwork concept and also some inspirations behind the design, and then follow that with some showcases of past projects and then some technical details about the sculpture itself. So I've prepared a statement here that kind of encapsulates the essence of the sculpture, and if you'd like to follow along, or you could just listen to me as well. Symbolizing one of South Florida's most iconic and recognizable flora, this sculpture brings to light the importance of thoughtful design amidst flourishing development in the state and country. As infrastructure expands to accommodate new residents in Florida, there is a crucial need to showcase the environmental qualities that have made the state of Florida attractive to many. Through the utilization of materials commonly found on construction sites, the sculpture aims to underscore the essential relationship humanity must maintain with the environment. Rather than working against nature, the focus is on collaboration, integrating development projects harmoniously into the natural landscape to foster continued growth and vitality. The orchid, a ubiquitous floral presence indoors and out, symbolizes the essence of environmental beauty. The design adorning the orchid sculpture echoes the vessels commonly... The design adorning the orchid sculpture echoes the vessels commonly seen in South Florida homes, accentuating styles esteemed for their historical allure. This sculpture embodies a harmonious blend of progress and preservation, underscoring their mutual importance. So, I'd, I'd like to just get into a couple of past projects. This here, Orchid City, I completed this last March. It's a sculptural intervention on a five-story parking garage on the newly-built Anya Residences on Banyan Boulevard in downtown West Palm. This project here, we, this was a collaboration with the artist I used to work for. We actually came on as fabricators and then built the wave according to a design that an architect had proposed to us, and then we clad that sculpture with galvanized steel. This is a process that him and I had worked on together, that actually incorporates natural intervention to get the colors within the, within the steel. And, and lastly, this was a project commissioned by an architect down in Miami for Novakov. It's nine layers of hand-cut paper and five layers of blue polycarbonate, and that was fabricated in order to achieve this topographic look of the ocean floor. And, so I'll, I'll just go through some technical details of the sculpture itself. It'll be fabricated out of inch-and-a-half aluminum, and then the silhouette will be waterjet cut and then painted to resemble Chinese and Dutch porcelain vessels. It'll be mounted to a concrete base in a flowerbed situated in, of, a flowerbed of native flora. That will be fountain grass, and the sculpture will be engineered to abide by all wind codes that we have here in South Florida. The sculptures, it'll be painted with a powder coat paint, it's an industrial powder coat. It's been treated in a way and tested to withstand harsh sun and sand. They actually tested it in the Abu Dhabi desert, and I just want to mention, because the next rendering that I show, the color, the blue is a little off, but this is, this blue that you see here on the screen, these hues are the, are the colors that we're going to achieve with the painting. And then this is just a 3D rendering to show kind of the side profile along with the sculpture itself. Some material examples, the Chinese and Dutch porcelain vessels that I got my inspiration from. And then, as you see here, just some relationships to the human scale. The sculpture itself is going to be 10 feet tall and about 85 inches wide, and it'll be positioned on a base that's about, what is, it's a foot, one foot six inches, 18 inches, and so that'll bring it to a total height of 11 feet six inches. And, let's see here, this here just shows the plaque locations on either side of the bench, and then the sculpture itself centered within that fountain grass on its base. That's, that's everything I have today, thank you.
Oh, excellent, thank you so much. It'd be really beautiful, it's great to see it. I mean, we, we get agenda packets, so we can kind of open it up on our own computers, but being able, being able to see the colors like that was just great. Do we have any other presentations or anything?
No additional staff presentation, Madam Mayor, no relation.
I was about to ask you, no, I was literally about to ask.
No relation here to Mr. Leoni, but staff recommends approval, and the AIPP Board recommended approval as well.
Excellent, thank you so much. So we don't have any comment cards, let's go ahead and close the hearing. May I please have a motion and a second to approve from our council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 47, 2024. I'll second.
All right, thank you so much. Any conversation, questions, or otherwise from council? Okay, Dana?
It looks beautiful, so it's nice to meet you and thanks for the elaborate presentation. So, just a couple of questions, I know there's a lot of activity going on out there and things like that, so a lot of people are moving in, a lot of construction going on. It looks like it's a little exposed to the benches, and that, you know, kids around might be climbing on the bench and then touching the art, and is it something that you would encourage people to touch, or is it sharp, is it fragile, you know?
So, it, it, it's not sharp, it'll actually have, the edges will have a slight round to them, and then with that inch-and-a-half thickness, it's a robust piece of artwork. In theory, I don't encourage people to climb on it, but we've positioned it in a way within the native flora, so that, you know, it's still, there's distance between the sculpture itself and then where you might have to actually climb in to get to it, so.
Okay, I appreciate it, because it looked like it was over, you know, overreaching onto the bench and things like that?
I can go back to, if you, so in this slide here, where that plinth is, where it says Art in Public Places, Location 1, that is the, that is the proposed width of the sculpture, that line that you see branching out on either side. So, the, the, the bed of fountain grass itself actually extends quite a bit further than the sculpture.
Okay. And then, at what point in the process is this actually, when do you install this, when is it put up? Is it when everything's done, the Publix and the restaurants and things like that? At what point does this get put up?
Yes, so we have a drop, we have a due date of, I believe, January of 2025 that we have to have this assembled, so it will be, it will be in the next few months.
Thank you very much, I think that's all I have, though.
Go ahead.
Okay, I've got a question, actually for Mr. Tuma, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Or to, or to staff via the AIPP Board. So, as you noticed on your outline of everything, there's going to be three or four different artworks out there on that whole property, so is there an expected theme that's going to be between flowing on all this property, or individual property? You know, I'm just trying to figure out what, where you're going with this, because it's pretty spectacular, that's, that's a nice start.
Yeah, so, the, the ownership really hasn't made a full decision on that, if they're going to tie everything together, or if they're going to have a separate and distinct. I submit to you that 8, 9 will be very similar just because of their adjacency, but we're not sure, we're trying to, we're trying to determine, is that going to be an iconic spot? How much art, how much art, how much money are we going to place at one spot versus the other? One of the, the ownership group has been very clear with me that they wanted to create kind of that Instagram spot, or whatever it's called, spot somewhere, you know, whatever, I don't know. I just got Instagram, so anyhow, I'm moving up.
Well, it's, well, it's, it's kind of neat, because you have the opportunity to do several pieces on one parcel, right? Which we don't see that a lot.
Right, I mean, when you think, when you think about Alton, I mean, Alton, it's a very similar example, Alton Town Center artwork, very similar within the facility, adjacent to where the water features, very different artists, then you have the art walk behind Publix, different artists, so it kind of creates some diversity, but it all at the end ties together.
Yeah, this is really pretty and unique, so hopefully there'll be some sort of theme, maybe built around that, but that, that will be for you and the applicant, so, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
All right, go ahead. Thank you. First off, it's beautiful, I love orchids, I have an eight-foot wall in my screen and porch filled with orchids, so I can really appreciate this sculpture. I, too, having just had my one and four-year-old grandchild staying with us for a month, had the same exact question that Council Member, Vice Mayor Milton had in regards to climbing, and I just, I have a feeling it will be climbed on, and I, with the grass, which is perfect underneath it, because it does complement the actual sculpture, and I really like that choice, I would encourage you to come up with some way of maybe trying to hinder that from happening. But I love it, and I do appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? No? All right, well, I do think it's beautiful, I look forward to seeing it in person really soon, and selfishly also, as the parent of a senior in college who's going to be studying art and sculpture, it is great to hear your story, and for all of us, the stories behind the art up here, it means so much, and then selfishly, to know that you grew up here and came back means the world as well, so that's also part of the story, and I think we'll all remember that every time we look at it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think you're good, so let's go ahead and, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any items for council action or discussion or items of interest? Nope? Nope? Nothing interesting? All right, do we have a city attorney report tonight, Max?
No, ma'am.
All right, with that, let's adjourn, thank you.